Thank you for joining us this evening in regular scheduled meeting of the Park City City Council on July 24th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brady Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Acorn is present, Your Honor.
Okay. Tonight Pastor Kit Berry is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember George Glover is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Aspire our heads please. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege to come here tonight. I ask for blessings upon the council members and the authorities of the city of Park City. I ask that they are blessed with wise counsel, wise decisions to make sure that they keep us safe and keep us honest. Father, we ask that they do the work that you have called them to do. I'm here as a council member and as the authorities of this city. We thank you for their service and we thank you for the time that they spend to make sure that they make wise decisions for us. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Jim, a second then? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. We don't have anything for awards or presentations this evening and for a public forum, we have one person signed up to speak. Zachary, would you like to come up?
Hi, I'm Zachary Beeden. I am the new Park City Pride Committee Chairman and I just wanted to bring a couple of things up and see what we could do about getting those going here in Park City. Park City Pride wanted me to come into Park City as a younger candidate, you know, to kind of spice things up and bring some new creativity and new ideas, just to kind of get Park City Pride up and going again. One thing I noticed when I joined was all the awards they have, you know, won in the past and it's just been a very long time since they've really kind of had much to do with Park City, just from what I understand. I'm new to Park City. I've only moved here since last October, so... But a couple of ideas I had. One of them, I am a volunteer at the new pathway in Valley Center. It's a plant church that we started back in, I want to say October, August-ish of last year. I volunteer with the high school youth group there and we have a group of kids there called Boots on the Ground and we go around and we just, we help people out who physically, financially, whatever the reason may be, they can't really upkeep their home. Mostly the exterior of the home, yards, you know, trees, just cosmetic stuff that doesn't look very good in the city and I wanted to bring that to Park City. I have kids in my youth group that are up for it and they want to help. I'm also part of a adult home team through the church and I've got two or three guys in there that also want to help. So I've got a pretty good sized group of, you know, younger to older men who want to help me bring that to Park City. And like I said, what would, what we would be doing would be just cleaning up Park City, you know, parks, people's yards, and this, that's anywhere from mowing a yard to picking up trash to helping people clean up just various things in their yard. And I know that there will be specifications that have to be met, requirements, regulations and everything, but I wanted to bring that up to the council and just kind of see where that could go. And also, I wanted to see what we could do about painting the fire hydrants in Park City. Whether that be repainting them red or an idea that we had was to paint them as much as we could, the same colors as the Park City branding, the yellow, the green, the purple. Obviously, the green wouldn't work too well with grass because I understand that we can't blend in with, you know, yards and stuff like that. They need to be able to be seen and I know there's things that we're going to run against as far as maybe if somebody doesn't like the color that we painted them. So just kind of wanted to throw those couple ideas out there and just see where they landed.
Yeah, I think we'd be more than happy to, I mean, obviously through Pride you can kind of head up and lead the charge of cleaning up. We can put you in contact with those people so that that can happen. That's not a problem whatsoever. On the fire hydrant thing, we can work together and kind of help you craft a plan to come and present so that we can talk about those things and then make sure that we bring that to the council like a fully developed idea that would already have the questions answered of people that may not want their fire hydrants painted and how we'd handle that. Absolutely.
Yeah. I have one more thing that's just off the top of my head right now that I didn't really even know that I was going to bring up, but I would like to. It's kind of funny actually. The main reason I joined the Pride Committee was so I could have connections here in Park City. I had no plan whatsoever being involved, let alone becoming the new chairman. It just kind of fell in my lap, but I want to, I would like to bring some sort of a public Bible study here in Park City somewhere. And the reason that I joined Park City Pride Committee is because I wanted to get my feelers out there if there were possibly any areas that I could go to where I didn't, you know, cost effectively, I didn't have to pay to do this, you know, once a week or whenever, once a month, whenever it was. And I just don't, I still really haven't found an area where that could take place once a week and I would like to know if at all possible, if there is a place that I can do that to where I can have people from anywhere, open to the public, who wanted to come in and just do just a public, not even necessarily a Bible study, but just a get-together where we could just, you know, basically break down the Bible and just study the Word of God.
Yeah, and I think we can, you know, you can probably work through that and we can help find a place that you can do that.
Sure. Do you know if there's a specific person I'd want to get in contact with or?
You know, if you want to call me this week.
Sure.
We can, we can talk about some of that stuff.
Okay.
Does that work?
That works.
All right. Ben?
Sure, just to the fire hydrant idea. I love the idea of the fire hydrant painting. You see these in several communities popping up and it does seem to bring about a sense of pride in the community, whether it's our neighbors over west of us in Valley Center doing them, Hayesville's been doing them, Bel Air's been doing them. So I think with the right parameters, I think it could be a lot of fun for our city to find some way to get involved there to help pride out too, so thanks for the idea.
Yeah.
George?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate your willingness to step up and be part of the pride, you know, at your age, relatively young, so if you know anybody else that would like to volunteer, by all means.
I'm working on it. I'm young by a few years, so...
But also the Boots on the Ground, I like that idea as far as being involved in the community, interacting with maybe some older folks, with people who don't have the means to get whatever, a yard cleaned up or mowed. So I appreciate the fact that you guys have stepped up and if I can help you, let me know.
Thank you. And it's all free. Anything that I would be able to do or that we would be able to do for Boots on the Ground, it would never be charged to anybody for anything, so it's just to help clean the community up basically and help people out, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, that was all we had this evening for a public forum and we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our chief, Chief Boston.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Last week, we had a discussion about some code enforcement issues and the subject was raised about volunteer services and in fact, this week I spoke with Zach, he's gone I guess, but we spoke by phone and so I hadn't had a chance to meet him in person yet, so I'm glad he was here tonight. In particular, we were talking about citizen volunteers who'd be willing to help people who are having problems with code violations or nuisance issues and especially folks that can't, they have an inability to do that, you know, whether it's by age or disability or lack of money. I don't think there's a real interest in, you know, doing people's work for them if they're capable of doing it, but for folks who cannot. So there's a couple of points that I wanted to bring up. I did have some resources I wanted to mention to you tonight, but a couple of things that I wanted to bring up first. One is that, I try to emphasize this when we talk about code enforcement issues because I know it can be one of those things that's a, I guess, a hot button issue sometimes where folks think that we're going to come in and be really picky on someone and, you know, go out and measure their grass and see if it's one inch over the eight inch limit and that kind of thing. And I can assure you that as a chief, it's not that way. We only have two code enforcement officers as it is now and we'll have hopefully a third after the first of the year. They barely have enough time to keep up with the gross violations. I mean, we're talking grass that's very tall and I know that you see some of that out there. You may have folks in your wards that call you about those kinds of things. So they're, they're not looking for small violations. They barely have the time to keep up with the larger ones. The second one is that when we talk about folks who are in violation of code issues, these are important issues, you know, they're, they're safety issues, they affect the property values, so they affect people's quality of life, but at the same time, I understand there are various reasons why people, you know, may find themselves in violation of it. Sometimes it's a lack of knowledge. They don't know that they can't do a certain thing. Sometimes it's, they're just involved with, they're busy, you know, they're just not paying attention. Sometimes it's willful neglect, you know, they just don't want to do it. They don't want to mow the yard or get rid of the junk and so forth. And occasionally, there are folks that just have an inability, you know, they don't have the money or the, the physical ability. What we found is that those that fall in the last category are a very small number of the total. It's not that these are unimportant, but I just wanted to bring up that point, that the vast majority of those who are in violation are following those other groups of, not necessarily willful violations, some are, but some are property owners that don't live here. They live elsewhere. They're absentee landlords and they don't care about the property, so those are the kinds of issues that we run into. The mayor asked me to bring a report to the council about specifically resources that we have available. I think last time I made mention of a list and I was going off of just my general knowledge of what code enforcement does. Over the last couple of weeks, I've looked into that a little bit further and when it comes to animal control issues, dealing with the animals, we do have an actual list of three animal rescue groups that we've worked with quite a bit and they've been extremely helpful. Occasionally, we run into homes where, you know, they have a large number of animals, cats and dogs in particular. I can think of several situations in the last couple of years where those animals would probably have been euthanized if it hadn't been for these animal rescue groups that come in and take these animals and are able to place them elsewhere. But Kansas Humane Society, of course, Beauties and Beasts, and Lifeline Animal Placement and Protection, those are three groups that we've dealt with extensively. We also have another individual that would prefer that their name not be made public, so, but they're on our call list as well. The other issues though, as far as nuisances, you know, we have the same general knowledge of organizations that could be helpful, like the Salvation Army and so forth. The issues there are not that we don't have contact with those organizations, but it's knowing specifically who to contact, what they will do, what their criteria are and so forth. But what we've found to be the most helpful really has been Pride, our own Park City Pride organization. In the past, when there's been a need, I don't know if you'd call it an official action of the, of the organization, but the folks who were involved are so familiar with our community and know the people in our community that they can name, well, I know so-and-so that does this and they'll put the person who needs help in touch with that person. And so it's a little bit more informal action, but the end result is it gets the job done. What would be really helpful to us as a police department and code enforcement in particular is to have kind of a clearinghouse, somebody who could handle, be the central hub where we could send folks who need help. I hate to put this task on our code enforcement officers to kind of have to manage the list. What we, what we see is that we have groups come in, there's been a number of church groups who have helped in the past and sometimes it's seasonal or it's just for a period of time. They've been very helpful, but those groups aren't always here for extended periods of time and so we may find that the list is stale by the time we need some help. So we need someone or some group, at least it would be very helpful if we had that as sort of a clearinghouse for groups and individuals that would like to help. I always hate to offer somebody else up for a job. I only mention Pride because they've kind of served in that role in the past and I haven't spoken with Zach particularly about taking on that type of role, but that's something that through the mayor that we might want to have a discussion like that, as opposed to sending folks to code enforcement and having them maintain the list. When it comes to animal issues, absolutely, we already do that sort of thing, but that's, that's kind of where we're at though. We don't have a specific list of organizations other than, we have a couple of churches currently, one of them is the one that Zach spoke about tonight, and then it's been informal contact with individuals in the community. So I don't know if that is helpful to you. A quick story, I just, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but just last week, one of our officers was, we got a call, it was an EMS call, assist EMS, and there's an elderly lady in our community, she's in her mid-90s. She walks through the neighborhood, she carries a chair with her because she gets tired. She uses the chair as a walker and then when she gets tired, she sits down. And sometimes people see that and they call in, you know, to check on her, especially if they're not familiar with her. But our officer got there before EMS and by that time, she'd gone back in, inside the house. And so he called out to her through the window and most of our officers know her by name. She's been here for many, many years. And she answered back and about that time EMS drove up and she said something to the effect of, "You can tell the bus to go on because I'm not going anyplace." You know, she didn't want any help, but what we found out though through that particular contact is that EMS has started a new program that they call Community Paramedic, I believe is the term that they use. It's a new position for them where they come out and evaluate the needs of, forgive my voice if it's allergies here today, but they assess the needs of particularly the elderly and then connect them up with resources in the community, so that's a new program that's been started. So it doesn't necessarily have to do with this issue, but I thought I would mention that, something that could be very helpful for folks. In fact, DCF and Department on Aging are starting to rely on this, this program, use it as the entry point for the elderly who are in need. So I'd be glad to answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Not seeing any. Chief, I want to thank you for coming up here tonight and just kind of running through this. Sometimes, and I include code enforcement in this, that you guys get a bad rap because most people see the enforcement side of what you do, but a lot of what you do has a big heart and you care for the citizens of the community and sometimes the, the community doesn't get to hear those types of stories. I was listening to a podcast earlier today that was interviewing a detective from another department, talking about, you know, his years of service and what he did and some of the things that stood out in his memory of stories he shared was just pulling over a single mom that was having a bad day that was speeding and he didn't write her a citation and he just sat there and talked to her for a half an hour and she said, "Why do you do this?" And he's like, "I just want to check on you and make sure you're okay." And that's a lot of times the, the attitude that you and the rest of the officers have. You just want to check on people and see if they're okay and I appreciate you sharing that story.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks. Tom?
I was just going to add to that, not only do they do that with individuals, they go to businesses and stuff and make sure everything's going fine there and stuff too. So there's a lot of community policing that goes on within the, the businesses in Park City too.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from the Assistant City Administrator, Dana Walbitt. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our two exciting projects that we have going on. And the first is the flag branding and they are moving ahead and they are on track and they are ready to, they said they will be absolutely ready when it comes to the August 6th meeting to have the branding report and then also a design, so we're excited about that. The other one is the one that we are in full gear right now, which is our pedestrian connectivity plan and we're encouraging people to come to the meeting that will be on this Thursday. There are actually two of them. There's one that is from 11:30 to 2:00 and one that will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So we're asking the citizens to come out, the citizens of Park City. We're also encouraging citizens from other communities to come out and tell us how they would like to see the sidewalks, the bike paths, so they can connect and come to some of the great things we have in Park City. You know, we have a terrific senior center here and we all know that and so do people from other communities and it is available for anybody that's 55 years of age or older that lives in Cedric County. And we have seniors that come and they come by bike and they come on foot and people know that when you get to be a certain age, sometimes it's a challenge for you. So this is a great project for us to be able to connect people within the city and also from other communities. And if you can't come to a meeting, we're encouraging people to go online and take the survey. The survey, when you have a survey, we look at that as people who put surveys together and say, you know, if we get 2%, that's a great number, we're already there. So this is really great for us. The other thing is, I think people have probably seen that we've gotten a lot of good positive coverage for this event and it's not just the event that we get, we get this great coverage for Park City, we get to talk about it. So I just want to give you kind of an update on where we've been and kind of what we're going to get out of this event. We've been on KSN Fox affiliate and the mayor was able to do some spots that will be repeated several times on the Enterprise stations, which is KNSS, then it's also KFH, KUAN, 105.3, The Buzz, and 93.5. We got KFDI, we've been on CAKE, we've been on KWCH, and then KWCH is actually going to do some live spots here in Park City, starting Thursday morning, 9:00 AM, and they're going to go to 11:00 AM and they're going to do live spots here and they'll cut away too. So we've gotten some great coverage. Answer any questions?
The media coverage has been fantastic and they've been great folks to work with too, just through this, just the positive story here is exciting too, to find out that we've already, you know, went past the 2% with just the signage that's been out and we haven't even hit the kickoff piece yet. We're getting a lot of, a lot of input, so. Does anybody have any questions for Dana?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to hear from our city attorney, Doug Moser. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is my kind of annual recap for you of the 2018 legislative session. This year was a lot like last year. The legislature acted real busy, but they didn't do a lot that really impacts us. Most of their efforts were focused on school finance, which again, they didn't get right, so they'll be working on that over the, over the rest of the year and into the next session. Now, there were a few matters that I wanted to just mention to you that were adopted that have some impact on cities and specifically on our city, and then a few that weren't adopted that might have been nice if they were. The first two had to do with alcohol. I mentioned, I think, could have been as far away as last year, that there was a, in the 2017 session, there was a change such that CMB distributors would be able to sell strong beer, essentially kind of doing away with 3-2 beer. Anybody that drinks beer, I think, would make the choice of buying the heavier stuff and there was a little glitch when they did that because at, at present, cities, the state and the cities collect sales tax on the sale of CMB and they don't collect that on the sale of alcohol. Strong beer was considered alcohol and so there was a bill passed this session to clarify and to assure that in April of 2019, when people with CMB licenses can start selling strong beer, that we'll be collecting sales tax and we'll get the benefit of that revenue. The sale of, of strong beer at retail is still going to just be a liquor enforcement tax as, as it, as it is today. The second is something that's been in the news a little bit and you might have heard of. The state passed a statute which now changes the hours of service of alcohol for clubs and drinking establishments from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. It used to be 2:00 AM to 9:00 AM. It was the, I'm sorry, the prohibited time is 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM now. It used to be 2:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Said a better way, you can now start serving alcohol in clubs and drinking establishments at 6 o'clock in the morning. Not sure, there, there might have been some reasons for events and brunches and things like that, but, but that's the law. Interestingly, our ordinances for clubs and drinking establishments still read 9:00 AM. So this is just a little bit of information about home rule, which some of you hear about when you go to the league meetings. We trump the state because we are more restrictive and we're allowed to do that under our home rule power. We can't be less restrictive, so we couldn't say that you can start serving in Park City at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, but as long as we have that on the books, then, then our ordinance really controls. So that's something to think about. I'll leave it maybe for the future if we want to amend that and bring ourselves in line with the state, we can do that, but for right now, that change really doesn't affect us. The legislature also dealt with an important matter for the police department and, and for Dana and HR. What they really did was they opened up personnel records and employment records between law enforcement agencies when an agency is hiring somebody for a law enforcement position. In the past, it was really Cpost that was the, the conduit for records when people wanted information about the employment, past employment of somebody who was moved on to a different, to apply for a different position. The law now is, is that, make it personal for us, if, if we have an employee who, who has left employment as a law enforcement officer and then later applies for employment somewhere else and we receive a request and a waiver from that person, then we are now required to turn over all of our files that are performance related and that's pretty broad. I think the thought... I think the thought there, I'll speak for the chief, at least the legislature's thought, was probably important to make that available so that there maybe are fewer examples of people who leave employment somewhere and then go somewhere else and then there's never information that follows as well as it should. And, and there's been some incidents in the, in the past several years where there's, where maybe some information would've helped and, and avoided some difficulties. So, so that's a change. It makes more work for both our human resource department and for our police department. And then one final comment on that, it, when we supply that information, the, what's done with that by the, the agency that's trying to hire somebody, we are immune from any liability for any information in there that we turn over that turns out to, to have an adverse impact on, on an individual. There were two kind of interesting changes made to the Kansas Open Records Act. One, which you might've thought already existed, but it didn't, is that they now are required, we are required to redact any social security numbers, any records that we, we put out. Would've thought that that was already the law. It's a good idea. Now, now it's official. And then secondly, again, related to the police department, there's been a lot of concern about body camera footage, both audio and, and visual. So now heirs at law, and that generally means sons and daughters, spouses, mothers and fathers, have a right to make an open records request to view and listen to body cam footage. And cities and other law enforcement agencies are required to make that available within 21 days after an appropriate request. And then finally, let me talk about two items that didn't pass, both of which kind of come up every year. The first one has to do with our tax lid. And there was an attempt by the league to have our employee benefits exempted from that calculation, which limits us on the, on our tax lid. Now, that failed. Whether it'll come up again next year, I don't know. So for the time being, between now and next year, cities and, and our city are, are going to have to rely on increases in assessed valuation in order to have an opportunity to have an increase in ad valorem tax revenue. And then finally, one that you probably read about from time to time, there was an attempt to impose our sales tax on all internet sales, not just internet sales between persons that are in the state of Kansas, but on all. And it, some of you may be involved in both sides of that, but that, that always gets quite a bit of opposition largely from online retailers. And it, it failed and failed relatively miserably. So whether that'll come back or not, I don't know. And again, that, I talked to Daniela today and I think our annual sales tax revenue is about $120,000 and certainly-
1.2 million.
Oh, 1.2, okay. 1.2 million, 120 a month. So you can see that, that would be a significant enhancement of, of our sales tax revenue, but didn't happen. Be glad to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Doug, thank you. Very informative. Appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And John?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Doug, for the recess, do we need to specify a time limit? Okay. Next item on the agenda is for us to recess so we can reconvene as the land bank and consider that agenda. Is there a motion? Ben?
I'm making a motion that we go ahead and recess.
And George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to calling the meeting to order. We'll call this meeting to order at 7:34 p.m. of the Park City, Kansas Land Bank. Our first, our item on the agenda is to consider a contract offer by Elite LLC for 37 lots in High Ridge 2nd Edition with options to be determined by the land bank. So as you remember, we discussed breaking those out into one acre lots. There didn't really seem to be a lot of want to replat that, which would be something we would have to do. And then TJ made an offer on it that starts to come within our threshold that we might want to consider. So TJ, if you want to come on up.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, gentlemen. Present to you the offer for the 37 lots for $2,006,000. Starting with that lots and then we'll go as we build them and then we buy the rest of them, the rest of the lots, as we talked about before. And we present to you guys the petition for these lots and that's our contract contingency on those, approval for those petitions for the lots.
Okay. I'll just open it up to the land bank. Anybody wants to discuss this? Tom?
I've got a question to ask. And on the, the housing that you're proposing to build there, we discussed it briefly in the first time you were in here. Going to be something-
They will be 2,300 square feet.
That's including the basement?
That's including basement.
Okay.
Five bedrooms, three bathrooms.
I made a trip back down through south of Bel Air and looked at your new development there, which is, I understand-
It's going to be similar to that one.
The one on the lake?
No, the one on Champion Street.
On Webb Road?
On Webb Road, yes.
Okay, I was hoping for something a little bit better than that, but-
Well, we need to-
Pardon?
Like, we'd like to stay on the budget so everybody can be afford to have houses for $190,000, you know? If you go just the one in, like, Blue Lake, it'd be talking about 200.
I saw there about 250, if that includes specials too, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, that's including specials.
Okay.
They start for 225, 225 minimum over there. And they go up to 380 on Blue Lake.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing seven homes so far over there, the whole street, you know?
Well, I think a little bit bigger house would sell is, is the only reason I'm bringing it up. And I don't know if lot size would have anything to do with it or if-
It is, it's the lot size and the area, you know? Because I see in the areas over here, it's not moving much on 225 and up or 245, you know? The next neighbors here, they've been having the houses not sold yet, you know, and they're moving very slow. And the whole purpose of doing what we're doing, just to help the community bring more client, more customers, more people to raise the value of the houses, you know? And I mean, sorry, to increase the income for the city. That's the whole purpose for doing that. And I think this $190,000 homes value, up to 200 maximum, you know, that will help everybody. Because the rent, you have a lot of rental on the west of us and they're paying a lot of higher rent. But people, if they can't afford that rent, they can't afford that mortgage.
Okay, anybody else? Jim?
Just a matter of semantics, but the contract we're looking at says it has to close on or before July 17th, which was last week.
Yeah, we'll continue that one.
Okay. That's all I had.
And let me say one more thing. If any customers, of course, will, if we have a custom build job, if somebody wants to upgrade their houses, of course, we will be happy to do that for them, you know?
Can I speak again to that? Just a moment.
Tom?
Okay. What I was trying to do is make them not look so generic. And if you go down the Webb Road Street, everything's the same color and just, not quite, but I mean, if you just glance down there, there's no uniqueness to individual houses unless you look at them. And I was just looking for a little bit more upscale.
Different colors.
Yeah.
A little of this, that.
And maybe the facade is a little bit different on the front, same house, but make it look a little different.
That's fine. We can do that. That's easy.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I guess since nobody's talking much, I'll also add that after the last time we met and we discussed this and laying it out in a different plat format, we weren't within a range to discuss this and we withdrew our, my counter offer at 2:15. So we withdrew that offer and then we didn't hear from you for quite a while and then you came back with this. So at this point in asking price, the land bank needs to make a decision. Jim?
One last thing, just from what I remember of our previous discussion, the dollar amount we're at now is over the hurdle of what we wanted to be at.
We're within the range, yes.
Within the range, okay.
Which is why I brought that back.
Tom, I'm going to ask one more question and that is the restriction that we're putting 30 basements be started within a year, does that-
That's my goal.
Does that hinder you on the style of house?
That's my goal, to do 30, 30 houses within the first year, you know? I already have a plan for 10 more, the first 10 houses already, you know?
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking at, by us restricting you that way, I'm not saying it's going to go away, but I'm just saying by us restricting you, that does not hamper, if you've got to do 30 real quick, does that change the approach of how you're going to go build the house and how, what it's going to look like and stuff like that?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Ben?
Sorry, just for clarification here, which, what lots are we looking at in the sale on the specific one for 37 lots? Is it part of this map?
It's under item one, lots 1 through 13, Block H. Lots 46 through 69, Block 1, High Ridge 2nd Edition. Jim?
See a lot of discussion, so would it be appropriate here to make a motion to accept the contract?
If you want to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I didn't word that. I would like to make a motion and we accept the contract as, as proposed.
Ben, do you want to second for discussion?
Yes, please. I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
So, right now at this point, we have Hillside that is paved. 69th Street is not paved.
Correct, but we do-
Is there, yes.
Go ahead, Jack.
Later on the council agenda, we'll be going over the petitions he submitted. He will pave a, a section of 69th Street and he'll bring it along with his development. So will it all be paved? No. But for the first drive coming off of 69th, it'll go from Hillside to that point and you have petitions tonight if you accept him to do that.
Thank you. I would, not a lot of discussion here on this. I, I like the idea that we're putting it into the hands of a private developer. I like the idea of the one acre lots too, but I'm not a Realtor and I'm not a real estate anybody, so I would much rather have a private individual do it than us. So I would agree with the original motion to go ahead and accept the contract.
Okay, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes 7-0. So I will sign the contract for you. Daniela, I don't know if you want to. All right, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn as the land bank. John?
So moved.
And Tom?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes 7-0. That brings us to reconvene and we'll reconvene as the council at 7:45 p.m. And we'll be under new, new business item A, which is consider, consider the petitions for the infrastructure for lots 37, for 37 lots in High Ridge 2nd Edition in connection That's what we're working on right now. All we have to do is just map out 30 days and we move on. Jack, do you want to cover the petitions?
We tend to run the temporary notes for two years. So it's conceivable that the city will never have to pick up a, a portion of, of the specials, especially if he performs as he says he hopes to in the contract. Is that clear or am I muddying the water? Okay. So on petition wise, it, it's, that section marked there in red is that section that gets the sewer over to his 37 lots. Okay? Now, let me get this off of here. Now there's another petition, it's Stormwater, and this one will not be activated at this time. There's a reason for that, but we need to, to have it signed off on by TJ and us for future. And let me explain why. This part right here is a ridge line and all those lots that are in the, they're covered by a dark line, all drain to this point here. And so, right now, under- And so, right now, under TJ's initial 37 lots, building a pond is not necessarily needed at this time. There may have to be some dirt work done for the little creek running through there, but nothing major like which would be required for a big pond. Here again, as he moves over and covers this section here, then that petition would be activated. The reason why we think it's important to have this in here is that the people over here are going to get assessed for it later after they already buy their homes. And by filing this with the registered deeds, when they get their title insurance, it will be listed as an obligation, future obligation. So, the people shouldn't be surprised later if they get an additional assessment for the drainage. I hope that's clear likewise. Okay? So, those are, you know, the others are pretty straightforward. They only include the 37 lots, the paving, both onsite, offsite are just controlled and will have bonding on those 37 lots. If I can answer any other questions, be more glad to.
Does anybody have any questions for Jack? Ben?
Trying to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the petitions for the infrastructure of the 37 lots and high ridge, second addition in connection with the development by Elite Construction USA.
George, I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Might say something to you, Mr. Mayor. Next meeting, resolution of the possibilities that will initiate the bonds and give the authority to the city clerk to seek out temporary note, interest notes will be forthcoming. So.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item B, which is considered the approval of the publication of the 2019 budget and scheduled public hearing on August 14th, 2018. Daniella?
Mayor and council, in your packets, you have a copy of the notice of public hearing that is to be published in the local paper. This is a requirement that we publish and hold a public hearing for the proposed 2019 budget. If approved, the public hearing will be held at the next council meeting, which is August 14th, 2018, at 7:00 PM here at the city administration building. The notice of public hearing includes a proposed budget summary, which details the 2019 revenues and expenditures and the 2018 added lower tax that will be assessed and collected next year. So, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I need to point out one other fact. At this hearing, you can only reduce the budget, but you cannot add to the budget.
Right. Thank you, Jack. Jim?
I think we knocked this around pretty well in our budget workshop. So, I would move for the approval of the publication in the 2019 budget and scheduled public hearing on August 14th.
Okay. Brandy?
I second that.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that motion passes six one. That brings us to item C, which is considered Bear Hill addition plat, third addition plat. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to put the plat up on the screen there. The land that we're talking about used to be Bear Hill, second addition. It had multitude of lots and it connected up to Bear Hill one. Two gentlemen bought that land at auction and they're going to make, each one of them, they're brothers, each one of them are going to own a lot and build a house on it. If you, I'll do a little drawing here. Down here, that's the road leading from Bear Hill one. I doubt that that road will ever be paved into that lot. So, we may want to look at vacating it if there's no problems with existing homeowners. They will be getting access from hydraulic to their homes. And Kurt Miller's here. He's the one that platted it. The planning commission has reviewed this and recommends you to approve it. And Kurt is here if you have any specific questions that you may have about the plat itself.
Might want to just add that this has already come for the planning commission and it's already been approved and they're recommending approval.
Correct.
Tom?
Well, the question I got is this is north of where they had, when the Realtor had a place out there. So, it would be on farther north on hydraulic to the north of the existing plated property?
Yes. It abuts it on the north.
Okay. And the first street that went in is the one that you're talking about, where you drive in and turn right and go north? We're talking about on the north side of that where the road ends?
Yes.
Okay. How big a place is that? Several acres?
Kurt, do you know what the acreage is on those?
I was going to say, I was thinking it was 48. That's what I'm looking to.
Forty? Okay.
About two 20 acre lots now.
It's a choice piece of property, by the way. It had a nice lake and some woods.
That's very nice property. I just wanted to state, I mean, for the, anybody that might be listening, we're talking about changing the plat, the shape of the lots. We're not talking about changing any zoning. It's still residential and, you know, sounds to me like it's going to get used for residential. So, that's great. I think the people in my ward will like this.
Tom?
I guess I'm going to make a motion. We approve the recommended plat change. I don't know how I need to make that motion.
That's all you're doing is approving the plat for Bear Hill third.
I'll do that.
Ben?
Second.
Okay. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven one. Next item on the agenda is item D, which is discuss the sale of the maintenance shop located at 200 West 53rd Street North, Park City, Kansas. So, we did the appraisal on that and off the top of my head, Jim, you might remember what that appraised at, but I did not look at that. But we've got an offer for the council to consider where a business would like to purchase that. They've also offered that the city could stay in it for six to nine months in a shared capacity, which I want to recommend doing that. Rent free until we can come up with something. And I know at one time, we've kind of talked about adding them over into the Sherwood building area so that they would all be housed together. And I think we've seen the efficiencies running better here in our new administration center than how we had seen in the past. So, for the council to consider, talk about. Jim?
I cannot remember exactly what it appraised at, but from memory, it was really close to this. It was 100?
I was thinking it was 100.
And this is 80 and this has been on the market for months. And this is the first offer I believe we've had. So, it strikes me, this is where the market's at. It's always hard with appraisals. You're trying to guess where the market is. Well, time will tell you where the market's at tonight. So, I think this is, this is a good contract. 80,000 seems appropriate to me. It's another little detailed deal, but I thought it was strange that they put in there what kind of interest rate they needed on what kind of financing. That's something you see when you buy a residential home, but not in a commercial contract. But just as long as they can't back out if they don't get the five and a half percent or 5% 15-year financing, because rates have been going up unfortunately. But anyway, I like the contract, but I'm curious what others say.
Well, the one thing I just want to add, a couple of comments real quick is we don't currently have the building for sale. We have had people that are interested in it. I know we've had several look at it, probably some businesses that we didn't want in there. This one's a concrete company. But I also want to point out too that the CCUA has on their next agenda to consider also potentially making an offer on that building as well. So, while the Martin's appraisal came in at 100 and then you think about, you know, we've got it for 80, but we don't even have it for sale. Somebody just wrote in a contract and said they wanted it. So, that's something for the council to consider. And then there also just has to be a plan in place on, you know, what it's going to cost to move us somewhere else. We also have to think if the CCUA wanted to make an offer on that, that we're going to pay for half of that. So, and if you looked at this price, the city would walk away with 80,000. They could go towards the construction of a new area for the maintenance folks. If it goes to the CCUA, we'd walk away with 40,000 to construct a new facility. But there's pros and cons and benefits each way for, so it's for you all to discuss. Brandy?
Since it's on the CCUA's agenda this coming meeting, I think maybe hold off on this contract. Because I like the idea of maybe CCUA buying that since it's right there. It was still, I mean, it just makes sense for the CCUA to have an administration building essentially, right there, right next to the plant. That's what I would, I would like to see. I would like to see us hold off on just doing anything with this tonight.
Okay. Tom?
I know a couple of people that are looking for spots out here like that. I didn't realize we were going to be even entertaining it until I saw it on the agenda. So, there may be some interest. I'll get with you after the meeting.
Okay. Ben?
I'd like to see us maybe, if this is just one offer, I'll see why we don't negotiate it just a little bit and see if we can get a little bit more out of it. Nobody offers their highest price the first go around. So, I'd like to see us maybe be a little bit more aggressive on the sale of the building if we're going to do that. The one thing I think would be a benefit though, if we look at a business taking it versus the CCUA, which I have no qualms really either, either way. But, you know, with this business, would we have the chance of also seeing sales tax revenue come in from the, to, for this building going to the sale of a business? So, that could be another added benefit if we sell to a business versus the CCUA. Though, if that's the best option, I'm fine with that too.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, there's some more information came out here since I spoke earlier. I was going off earlier memory thinking we listed this. So, I guess I missed the part, forgot that we didn't, this has not been listed on the market. So, I wanted to correct myself. As far as the CCUA goes, I just want to see what they need the building for and understand more about that, you know? So, I'm okay. Let's wait and let's, it sounds like there's other potential buyers here and I'd want to hear what they have to say too.
Okay. John?
I agree. I'd say we sit down and wait for what we get. Look at all the cards.
George?
Yeah, I would do the same thing since-
I think that was George Capes.
Oh, sorry.
If he wants to talk, that's fine. But I can't imagine why we'd sell it without testing the water. You know, somebody might want to give us more. That's a choice location down there.
George?
I do like the idea of getting 80,000 and walking away with that 80,000. I don't know how many more bids we would get at that price. If we set it at that price, maybe we can get a few more offers up over the 80,000 range. But I definitely think we need, probably need to see what we can get for it on top of the actual 80,000 we've been offered already.
Ben? Sounds like to me, we need to put the building on the market. Because I don't think anyone's just going to walk by. I mean, this one did, but we're all talking about wanting to entertain more offers. But if it's not going to be on the market, then chances are no one's going to just put in an offer randomly to really show where the market's at on this. So, I would think that we would need to either approve this or put the building on the market for sale to see really how strong the market is for that building.
John, can we avoid any fees if it's not listed? If we just have people throwing offers at us direct?
Well, this didn't come direct. It came through our Realtor that we use for the other building. All right. Jim?
So, the question tonight, what's on the agenda, is just accept or reject this offer. And then we could make a recommendation for, in the future, that we consider listing this. That's my understanding. We're not, we can't get into listing it tonight.
So, I guess I need to jump in here.
Yeah.
We got an offer. I cannot accept the offer. I cannot reject the offer. That's why it's here. You have to make that decision. The council also needs to know and have a conversation, do they want to sell the building? And you can't just put it on the market without a plan. What's the plan? Are we going to put a plan in place and start working on where we move them somewhere? That's what the council needs to make a decision on. What are you going to do? But with this item, it's, do you want to accept it or do you want to reject it? Okay. John?
I'm for rejecting it, but I also, I would like to have input from staff on what's the best plan. I mean, the folks that were down there are going to be able to tell us what serves them best. I'm not for having them here, but which one of our other locations is the best place to put them? So, maybe at the next meeting, if staff could give us a recommendation on what they feel and we could proceed with getting that listed and making that transaction. I mean, I think, I think, I don't think we need to sit and wait for it to sell to start on what we're going to do. But I feel like our best plan is what the needs are of our employees.
And Jack?
We had talked, I talked to Nick about this and Rick, you know, there is a location on the north side of Sherwood that a building might fit. I could probably get you a rough cost of what a replacement building would be. Be metal and I don't know if the equipment we have currently is built into the floor could even move to a new building and that might be an additional cost. But I will work on that and try to have you something by your next meeting, just for you to think about. Certainly, I can almost tell you that 80,000 is not going to cover the price of a replacement building.
It wouldn't even cover the lift.
No, probably not. Probably not.
Okay. All right. Jack, if you want to start working on that and bring it back. And as far as location, we've had discussion about that. There might be a little disagreement there, but I think most of the administration would believe that that building would need to be located in Sherwood, to everybody's house.
And Mayor, I guess, I know Jack started popping in, but I would make a motion. We reject the offer.
Okay. Brandy, did you want a second for discussion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay.
Though, I was just going to say, pretty much second everything that John said. I would like to see what the costs would be to go to a new location. I'd be interested in us moving over to Sherwood. That makes perfect sense going over there where all the equipment's at anyways. So.
Okay. Tom?
I was just going to say, we haven't vetted this except up here. This is kind of a little workshop item where you sit down and talk about what you want to do in the future and what you want to get rid of. And it makes sense for CCUA to have something like this because they're already there. But if we've got a good buyer that comes in and is interested, we need to consider it down the road. They also need to understand that fence in the back needs to be moved. And they're not getting what it looks like it is. They're going to get what's platted there. So, lose about 20 feet of that parking lot. But I think we need to move on down the road with it and discuss it and decide what we want to do with that building, get with Jack, find out what it's going to cost to move those guys. And does Sherwood make sense or does another location make sense for them? So.
Okay. So, Jack will work on like plans so we can get some cost analysis on what it would take to move us. And either Brandy or I will report back with the discussion from the CCUA meeting, if the CCUA is even interested or not. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item E, which is consider three council members to serve on a committee for hiring a city administrator. Doug, did you want to talk about the resolution that's currently in place for the process of the city administrator?
If I can remember it accurately. Yes. The resolution calls for the mayor to appoint the city administrator with the approval of the governing body. So that's essentially what it says.
Okay. All right. George?
Well, as you well know, Mayor, I had hoped that we were going to use a professional outside deal to do the search for us.
That's kind of what I hope the committee would do, is put together an RFP to select a professional service to go out.
I'd like to see that. You know, I... I would assume that you would want the council president to serve on that. And another one I would recommend would be Tom Jones. He's far away, the most experienced council member on this council. And that's just my thoughts.
So do you want to nominate?
Yeah, I would nominate those two, yes.
Anybody else?
Okay. John?
I would nominate Jim and/or Brandy, or maybe an alternate even. Would probably not be a bad idea.
It would be nice to have either one of them with their financial background. I would agree.
Go ahead.
Did you want to nominate officially one of them?
I guess... I would like to nominate both of them. And if we want to vote individually on who we're going to pick, that's fine.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate both of them. I think they'd both be a great asset to make that selection.
Okay. Brandy?
I cancel it.
Okay.
Okay, we have nominations. Does anybody else have a nomination? If it's not, okay. So I'll make a motion that we vote on the nominations that have been made.
Okay. So we have the nomination of council president, Tom Jones, Brandy, and Jim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
We have four.
Yeah, four.
Well, I was... Yeah, I'm confused on that.
You can vote for yourself. I mean, and...
I'm sorry. I was confused, too, Mayor. I was meaning individually.
You want to vote on them individually? Okay. So let's vote on George Glover, council president. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? George, do you vote for yourself?
I'd vote for myself. Aye.
All right. That passes seven zero.
If everybody passes on it, then...
Yeah.
So seven zero on that one. So the second nomination is for Tom Jones. So all those in favor of Tom signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Tom, do you vote for yourself? Okay.
I was losing battle. I might as well.
Okay. That one's seven oh. Ben, did you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, I think we should go back and redo how we're voting.
I'm sorry. I did not vote for Tom.
Okay. So Tom is six one. Okay. For Brandy Bailey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's seven oh. For Jim, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That passes seven oh.
I'm not it, and that's good.
I guess I did not vote for Jim. Sorry.
I was worried. I was worried you were going to be upset about that. Thank you.
So Ben's now saying that he's a nay. So we need a tiebreaker between Tom and Jim. So we'll vote again. Those are the only two options. All those in favor of Tom signify by raising your hand. Okay? All those in favor of Jim signify by raising your hand. All right. So Jim, you won that one four over three. Does that work? So hopefully that committee can start to get together, start working on an RFP for the process of hiring a new city administrator.
George?
Well, I just... Then you are looking forward to us maybe retaining a professional...
Yeah. That's what I'm looking for, these three to...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item F, which is discuss trash and recycle containers in our park system.
Dana?
Thank you, Mayor, man, and council. There have been some requests to look into adding additional trash receptacles and recycle receptacles to our park. So just kind of an update, once again, a reminder that the trash and recycle also would be covered under our contract with Waste Connections. So what that means is that the containers would be provided and the trash would be picked up. However, the trash and recycle have to be located at a certain place for Waste Connections to come pick that up. So that you can kind of be aware of what that entails for our staff. Currently, staff feels that the containers that are in the park for trash are meeting the needs. They do trash on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. What that means is that one person in the park department spends five to seven hours doing trash on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Because we have containers, like at the community building, we have one container that's chained up, and then we have a two-yard. What the park department does is that they take the trash that is in that container, they roll it over, they put it into the two-yard, and then Waste Connection picks it up at the two-yard. Grove Park has a trash container, and you see them that they're chained up. And you'll see that there's one at each gazebo, there's one at the playground, and there's two at the pond. So what the park department does is they go, they take the trash out of that, they roll it over, and they put it into a truck, and then they take that over to our old plant. Jardine Primrose, they each have one container. The trash that's in there, if there's a limited number of amount of trash, they'll take a five-gallon bucket, they'll go put it into the bucket, they'll take it out. But if the trash container is filled to a certain point, they have to put it in a truck, they haul it over to the old plant. The skateboard park has two. Once again, they kind of do that same thing of that they go and they will put it into a smaller container, or they have to haul it over and they put it in the bigger two-yard that's in the park. When you get to the baseball area, they have a lot of containers that are chained in that area, and that is taken care of by our baseball folks. So that doesn't take our staff time to do it. So it kind of ebbs and flows as far as how much time it actually takes. So Monday usually is our biggest day. It takes more time, so that's going to be about seven hours. That one person is dedicated to do that. Wednesday, not as much, but it, once again, ebbs and flows depending on if there are celebrations in the park, how much rental time we have at our community building. So it is... It's quite a process for our staff to do. So if we were to move to recycle, it would be the same thing that we would be considering. Once again, those containers would be provided by Waste Connections. We're looking at... You've seen the containers that we have at our households. It would be the same kind of container. They'd be chained in our parks. We'd go through that same kind of process to get that to a point that the recycle could be picked up. I will let you know that the big consideration for a recycle program is contamination. If there's anything... They need less than ten percent. If it gets to fifteen percent instead of being recycled, it's going to go in the trash. Riverside Park in Wichita, they tried a program. Waste Connections was involved with that. They said it was about three to four months, and they had to discontinue the program because there was too much contamination in the recycle program. And a big problem right now is that the market for recycle has dramatically changed because China has said that they're not going to take recycle from the United States because of the amount of contamination. So you did see, probably in the not-too-recent past, there was a lot of concern that was expressed because previously there was ability to recycle at Leakers, and that has been discontinued. The reason is because Waste Connections was doing that and because there was no market for that recycle. They were actually having to pay to get that recycled. And according to Herschel West, who is our contact at Waste Connections, what he has said is that there still is a small market in the Midwest, but it is really dwindling down. And if you caught the news tonight on Channel 10, there was a story about Valley Center. I see some people shaking their heads. Valley Center is going through a real rough spot when it comes to their recycle. They have recycle. It is not provided by Waste Connections. It's Waste Management. And what they're finding is that even though they're under contract, they're wanting to change that, and they're wanting to add what would be an additional dollar sixty-three cents per household for the recycle program because Waste Management does not have a market. So, you know, and they brought up that the contamination in China, that it really has dwindled that down. I have really confirmed with Herschel at Waste Connections because the concern has always been, every time we started to talk about recycle, is there really... Are these products really being recycled? Or is it just being thrown in the trash? And Herschel says, yes, we absolutely are still recycling. So we want to encourage our residents to continue to recycle. If you do not have a recycle cart, please get one because it is a very positive thing for us to do. But I would ask you to take all of these things into consideration, answer any questions that you would have.
Ben? So Dana, from what I'm gathering, what you've said there, we'd see, obviously, in adding... If we were to look at adding trash bins, recycle, more additional ones, we're going to see an increase in the workload for our parks and maintenance, or the parks people that are working there. We're also seeing, or what, from what you've said, from Waste Connections, they're seeing more contamination often than not than is enough to recycle. Is that be right? Did I phrase that correctly? There's more contamination in the recycle containers than what's allowed really for them to recycle.
Yes, that usually is what will happen. So for example, if we were to put recycle into Grove Park, and we have people that are walking their animals, and they throw that waste into that recycle, it's gone. It's going to go in the trash at that point. And if there's a lot of food that's left in some of the containers, it's contaminated. So it has not been successful from Wichita and other cities who have tried it. So the things for you to consider this evening is, would this be a viable option for us to do? And then, secondly, if we do this, it will add additional time for our staff to be able to get those to a common location so it could be picked up.
And we don't want to make our staff try to decipher through which is contaminated and what's not contaminated at a central location, so...
Our staff actually wouldn't do that. What would happen is that when Waste Connections came to pick it up, they would be visually seeing that, and they would say, no, this is not going to make it to recycle. We're going to actually dump this in the trash at that point.
I guess one last question. What would be the... Would there be an additional cost then if we looked at adding the recycle containers?
No. That would be provided by Waste Connections as part of our contract.
Thank you.
John?
I guess from what I'm hearing, this doesn't seem like a very viable option. Is there... I guess the request was made to do this. Is there... I mean, is city staff or anybody saying that we're finding amount of trash laying around or recycle laying around that there was a need by a citizen or what?
The question that has arisen, it's twofold. There had been a question from council previously, and then there has been a citizen from the community that has made a request to the park board to look into recycle. Which, on the surface, it looks like it would be a great thing because if you go and you look in at McLean after a ballgame, you see that there are just dozens and dozens of plastic bottles that your first thought would be, wow, we should recycle this. Park City is a green community. We're encouraging people to recycle, and then we have all of this material in our park to recycle. However, when you look at the rest of the facts associated with it, is it a viable program to do?
And that's what I'm saying. I guess I feel like if we did try this, I don't think we should go all in. I think it should be more of a, put a couple down there, see what it looks like after a month or two during baseball games or whatever that may be. But I guess I kind of tend to go against...
And I would say that on the baseball piece of that, because that is something that our baseball program is currently doing, all of that trash. The question would be, would we ask them to take this on? Or would then would we step in and as our staff, would we go into that area? And then we would add that to what we're currently doing.
John, again?
Yes.
Brandy?
Dana, is this looking at adding the trash and recycle, both extra containers, to each of the parks?
There had been questions as to whether or not we needed to add additional trash receptacles. My assumption would be that that would be to make it easier for people, that there would be more locations. We could add additional trash. What we're finding now, according to our staff, is that their thought is, because of the trash that's in those receptacles, that it is handling what is necessary at the parks. But you add more trash containers, which we could do, there would be no cost for those containers. It would just be the additional staff time because then that would be another container that would have to be, you know, it's chained, it's going to have to be taken, the trash is going to be taken and hauled off.
Well, I think if it's holding the trash well in the parks, what you've had to say about the recycle, I would be... I would... It makes sense to maybe not put the recycles in the park. But I would still be interested in maybe putting a couple trash cans along the walking paths. Just something to think about down the road. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, and we would just need to identify what you mean by walking path and where you would want those.
Okay. Jim?
Help me understand just a little bit. Why do we have to have city employees consolidating the trash? For ex... And let me explain it before you answer, but baseball diamonds, we just put addresses on all those. So why can't the trucks just drive through there and pick up the trash? Now, I get it why in a walking park, because they can't get out along the sidewalks.
Where the trash trucks... So McLean Park, take McLean Park. There are trash cans that are up by the shelters. A truck cannot get into that park. So our staff will unchain those. They're chained so that people can't move them around. They'll unchain them, and they'll go and they'll dump them into the two-yard container that is there in the park. So that's what the staff is doing. They're taking those containers that are within the physical locality of the park, not on the road. They have to dump the trash that's in that. When you go over to Grove Park, the series of parks, that's way off of where the road is at. So they're chained as well. If you go over there, and you'll see that it's like chained to a gazebo area. The staff has to empty the trash from that because the trash truck does not go up over the sidewalk into the park.
And I get it on Grove. But why can't we move the part, the McLean Park trash receptacles out along the road?
Because that would not be convenient for people who are picnicking under one of those shelters. Then people would have to walk further.
I'm thinking of the road along the baseball diamonds. You're talking about the shelters, so, okay.
And once again, on the baseball diamonds, the ball program does take care of making sure that all of those are out and ready to be picked up. They actually physically move those over. Our staff does not do that.
Okay. I've said for a long time that recycling is a great... is a great idea if it's economical, you know? When you start spending money to do it, you kind of take away the incentive. You know, people are people. If they're incentivized or it's easier or whatever to recycle, they're going to recycle. So I don't... I'm not in favor of charging or paying more to recycle. So I'm not big on the recycle thing, but still trying to figure out the trash side of it.
Jack?
We had thought about, you know, pulling them out to the park road and having them pick them up. But then we see what they're doing to our residential streets, they're tearing our residential streets up, these trash trucks are. And the park roads are not built to half the standards our residential streets are. Unless they get a pickup or something, we wouldn't necessarily be for these big container trucks going down through there.
Good point. Ben?
So you mentioned Riverside Park has tried this, has Waste Connections mentioned any other parks that have tried this program and seen any success with it or?
They only reported that that was a program that they worked with in Riverside and they really tried to make that happen and the recycle was so contaminated that it just wasn't viable.
And also concerning the trash containers, adding more trash containers, has the parks, the park employees said that there's been, have we seen an increase in trash left out? Or trash there in the parks that they've had to, that they have had to work on that would require more trash containers be there?
No, in fact, what was said is that the trash ebbs and flows depending on where it's at in the week and typically Wednesday is a lower trash day. And I asked specifically, do you feel that what we currently have in the park, it is adequate for the amount of trash? And the answer was absolutely, we feel at this point in time that it is handling that. The only situation would be, is it convenient for people? And if there's a desire to, you know, add something for the convenience. But at this point, staff feels that the trash is well maintained with the exception of, here's one of the things that I've heard and depending on the park and depending on the time, that people do not hit the trash can anyway. And so it's beside the trash can, but it may not be in the trash can and we're going to be picking up trash anyway, so. But as far as the amount of the trash, the feeling is that there is an adequate number of containers.
I've been down there, especially on Hat McLean, quite a bit, quite a bit, I'm sorry, I can't talk tonight. And it's not right next to you, but it's not, it's not burdensome to walk to a trash container there, I feel that they are quite adequate. So my thought would be based upon the increased cost for employees there that we had to spend in labor. I would say that we just move on.
John? I was going to make a motion, I felt like we've had a good conversation about it and I just don't think we're quite there yet. I think we're closer than we were five years ago or ten years ago, but I'll make a motion, we take no action on this item.
George, did you want a second for a discussion?
Yeah, I want to talk about a little bit. I think based on what the staff is saying, it's adequate what we have now. When I go over to the park, I don't see a lot of trash thrown around, it's actually pretty clean. I don't see, when I do open the trash bins, it's very infrequently half full, if full. So I think what, as far as adequacy, per staff, what their opinion is, I would go with what we have now.
Okay, there's not any more discussion, there's a motion and a second, not to take any action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is governing body reports, we'll start with Jim for council members.
I have no report tonight.
Brandy?
I have no report tonight.
George?
I have no report.
Tom?
I'd just like to say that the auto auction on North Broadway had their grand opening last Friday. Announcements were not sent out well, so most people missed it or didn't know what was happening. They're moving all their auto sales to North Broadway and then they're going to retain the place down on Fifty-third Street for trucks and RV stuff. So they're going to have bigger and better, so.
Okay, Ben?
Sure, just want to invite everyone out, August fourth there on that Saturday at nine o'clock at Daylight Donuts, I'll be doing my convos over coffee, so I'd like to see anyone out there. And then at this point, that is the plan for the ice cream social that the, down at Hat McLean Park, that'll be August fourth there from, I believe it's six to eight PM, so come on out to Hat McLean. And then also, I believe this weekend, and Zach might know for sure, but this weekend is Movies in the Park there. So invite you all to come on out Saturday evening, I think it's Coco that's showing, so it'll be a good time.
George?
Yeah, there is a new business going in next to Fried Pies, there's a big banner up there. Folks in the community need a job, I would check that out, they are now hiring. From what I understand, it's a retail business, so if you need a job, I would check that out, the banner's out there now, thank you.
John?
I have nothing.
I just got a couple of comments real quick. A lot of times I get flack for being strong willed about things that I think need to be done within the city. And I'm going to give you a prime example. One is the land bank decision tonight to sell that property, to which I strongly opposed at the one forty-four. And I got you sixty-two thousand dollars for the city because I fought for that, because I didn't think it was right. I still think we need to put a charter ordinance in place to remove the residency requirement for the city administrator. I've heard arguments that maybe we should do this, see what happens, and then come back. That just makes us look like we're incompetent. The whole point with the charter ordinance is to get us out from underneath the state statute and give us the flexibility to make the decision of what best needs for our city. If I was part of that interview process and I was interviewing three candidates, one of my questions would be, are you willing to relocate to the city? And I have X, Y, and Z that are all great candidates. And X and Y say they would not be willing to relocate and Z would, that would give them the edge. JFK once said that the change is the law of life. And those who only look to the past or the present are certain to miss out on the future. I just hope this council doesn't miss out on the future. And with that, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
There's a second?
Second.
Had a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero.